Yeah, I don't care. They got time to think about it. I don't want to be too...
You'll bring it up.
They're not my questions. Yeah, I'll wait till the last person. Actually, there's three. I can see. What the hell?
Welcome to the March 13th, 2023 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise be to God. Lord, thank you for another day of life and the opportunity to come together with sound minds, open hearts, and respect throughout our decision-making process as we serve the citizens of Sandusky this evening. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Barris, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Wantington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meiser?
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Brady?
Here. I would ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Meiser.
So, a second?
Got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection, that motion will be approved. Mr. Meiser is excused. I will ask for a motion to excuse Mr. Murray. I believe he's on his way, but in the event that he gets hijacked, we'll excuse him anyway. I have a motion to excuse Mr. Murray.
Second?
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved. Hearing objection? Hearing no objection, Mr. Murray is excused, although I... we hope he shows. Commissioners, you have your four minutes of February 27th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wantington?
I'm with it. We accept the minutes of the February 27th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved also. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name, address, and your agenda comments. I believe Commissioner Poole may have a couple of questions sent by resident?
Yes, I got from a resident text that says, "One, under item 13, what's the estimated gain or loss of rental registration fees from passing that?" Two, what plant... what do we have? Okay, we have Airbnb information, but if you go online, it appears that there may be more Airbnbs in town than we know about. What programs do we have in place to address that? I don't know that that's a true statement or not, but what are we doing to make sure that we get everyone? And the last one is with regard to our... I think the Planning Commission is working on a long-term plan about... that may limit in some... limit the number of Airbnbs in town. That's where that issue stands, if we're still working on that.
Great. Those items will be addressed as that legislation comes before us. Additional comments from residents regarding agenda items?
I have you.
Just in time.
Yes, just move. Hi, my name is Marcy Platt. I live at 1217 Columbus Avenue. I think one of your things on your agenda involves financing, looking at a rec center. And I thought that they were going to have... in fact, I didn't give any money until the school had told me, and it was Jennifer Lippes, I bought tickets for Kalahari, so that money would go into the... them having at least two or three pools. And part of the idea of that was that one of those pools was going to be... have the ability to be a warm water pool. Now that they have majorly changed that project to make it a one-pool project, it's not going to be a water pool if you've got all these kids who don't have... you know, they have to go over to Danbury right now to swim or whatever. I would hope that with the rec center, you know, we're getting to be an older population. It really helps for people to have a warm water pool who have multiple sclerosis, have bad backs, have all kinds of things. And the Ernst Haasen Center has one, but for them to pay to go to use it is pretty cost prohibitive unless you live in Norwalk. So I'm not sure how Norwalk funded theirs. I don't know any of their particulars, but then I also saw that there were plans to put a levy on for the recreation center. And I just believe if you spent $16 million north of Washington Street, I think the residents here deserve a rec center without a levy. But if you're going to put it on a levy, and we're going to have to pay to go there, could we please have something that would allow our residents who are in pain and need to exercise a warm water pool? There is one at Gnomes, but you have to pay for physical therapy to go into that pool. So, just asking you to consider it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Platt. Well, hopefully, we can address those questions when that legislation comes before us. Additional comments from residents regarding any agenda items? If not, we will move to a presentation this evening that we have from Erie County Economic Development Corporation by their now former Director, Abby Bemus. And staff.
If you don't mind, I brought a posse.
The more the merrier.
In part in recognition of my upcoming transition, I wanted the commission to have a chance to really meet more of our team. I know you've crossed paths, but thank you for having us all.
Thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm Andy Curtis. I'm Dean of Firelands College. I'm here with my colleague, Dan Frederick, Mylan Township Trustee, representing the Ecadech Board of Directors. I want to thank the city for allowing us a, you know, brief opportunity to make a presentation today and for its continued support of Ecadech and its mission. As an investor and a partner in the city's transformation, Bowling Green State University especially has benefited from Ecadech's expertise and especially from its, I guess, now former Executive Director, Abby Bemus, to whom I now yield the floor. Watch that.
So, I know several familiar faces here, of course, but for the benefit of residents tuning in, Erie County Economic Development Corporation, we are a private nonprofit, public-private partnership. That means we are fortunate to have participation from our largest local communities as a part of our vision and Board of Directors, also as a part of our funding. And for that, I'm excited in the sense that the city's contribution, and both in board participation and financially, can be leveraged by the private sector, historically at a 20-to-1 ratio in terms of our other private donors. So, the mission is to grow economic opportunities for city residents. We do that through a number of strategic programs and partnerships. Before we delve into those, I did just want to take a minute to, of course, thank all of you. We can't do economic development in a vacuum. You all are building the environment conducive to growth, and you're doing so really, really well. Congratulations on our latest success. We all knew America's best coastal town, but it's nice to have it formally recognized. So, we're going to talk a little bit about Ecadech's strategy tonight, just hit on key points and key successes. We work in three core pillars of work, the first being business attraction, retention, and expansion, including entrepreneur's support; the second being workforce attraction and development; and the third being regional economic development and brand awareness. First up, under the banner of business attraction, retention, and expansion, this is really the core of our work. We're big believers that private businesses drive the success of a community, create opportunities for residents that enhance their quality of life. The statistics show that. If you delve deep into local poverty rates and labor force participation, if you are participating in the labor force, you have a high well-being. If you are not, your poverty rate in the city of Sandusky is 40%. So, we believe in the statistics support that economic growth is... comes down to strong businesses and strong job opportunities, and we focus on that in our work. What do we do at Ecadech? We help companies navigate their growth opportunities, so we're helping people with site selection, community navigation, financial resources, anything we can do to incentivize their choosing to do business in the city of Sandusky and Erie County. I'm pleased to report lots of success over the last two years. We're working with about 200 companies a year, and their investment has been substantial in Erie County, over $480 million, and 417 jobs created through projects associated with our office. We are pleased to help leverage that investment with state and federal resources, over $23 million, again, to encourage them choosing Erie County. So, a couple key examples of that, first two big ones outside the city of Sandusky, but that I think will be extremely meaningful for city residents, the first being a big attraction win with Arda Metal Packaging. This is at the rear of Sawmill Parkway in the city of Huron. Many of you have probably noticed the construction of their facility. That's an over $411 million capital investment, at least 211 jobs created, so a lot of opportunities for our local residents. The second, even closer to home, just last week, news broke about the upcoming demolition of the former KBI building in Perkins Township. We call it 2509 Hayes now. We're extremely excited about this new beginning for this site. This will be a 128-acre clean site available for industrial investment in our community. Anybody in this town that's unheard of, we don't have any other site inventory like that, and we are really confident that this will mean great things for city residents and for the broader region. But a couple examples closer to home as well, some key expansion wins over the last couple of years, exciting things going on at American Colors. We're able to support them with state incentives for their recent expansion, helped Everwild Spirits through some community navigation in their beautiful new facility, new equipment procured at Sandusky Packaging and Peerless Ovens, and then, of course, played a role in the beautiful new Hogriffy Cook Building down the street. Alyssa's going to touch now on some of our entrepreneurial successes over the last couple of years, and I'll hand it over.
Hi, Alyssa Fisher, RISE Coordinator. It's good to be here. Thank you for your time. RISE is an entrepreneur support program, line of effort within Erie County Economic Development Corporation. Since 2011, RISE has supported over 550 unique entrepreneurs, ranging from those who just have a great idea to those who have been in business for many years. Our advising sessions have seen an increase in the last year, an increase of 63%, which is great news. Thank you to our network of entrepreneurs and our community and professional partners for that. To further spotlight our growth, I'd like to recognize that we've done 17 different events in the last year. We try to do monthly targeted events to support entrepreneurs, and we had over 280 attendees, both in person and virtually for those events. One notable event was the first annual BG SU Fireland Small Business Symposium. This is a purposeful event to gather local business owners and leaders to learn about a specific topic currently affecting the business ecosystem today. We want to share tools and resources that they can take home and use to develop professionally and within their business. We also hosted, most recently, an informational session at Venue 634 for Sandusky-based businesses about the City of Sandusky Economic Development Fund. Some small businesses I'd like to highlight is body by Erica Taylor for her recent expansion, Firelands Accounting Services for their development of new business strategies, the new location and establishment of new business goals for Makaroot Juice Bar and Eatery, and then the startup of several businesses, Sea First, which is a transportation business, Studio by the Bay, an art and heirloom seeds business, and then Firelands Adventure Tours, of course, you know, the new bus tour business. I'd also like to mention that RISE is starting something new this year to support our youth entrepreneurs and foster entrepreneurship in our young people. The student pitch challenge, we have worked with local schools to implement a curriculum within the classroom, teaching students how to develop a business elevator pitch. This Thursday, they will perform that pitch to an audience and to a panel of judges for a chance to win a cash prize. This will be the first time that we've ever done that program. I'd also like to highlight IMBET, the Minority Business Empowerment Team. It's a grassroots collaborative effort between local minority-owned businesses, RISE and Ecadech, the city of Sandusky, and Sandusky City Schools. Thank you to Commissioner Harris for being a founding member, and to the Diversity Equity Opportunity Manager, Marcus Harris, for being part of the leadership team. So, according to the makeup of our local population, we should see greater representation of women and minority-owned businesses in our community than the latest census numbers show. So, we created a targeted resource, IMBET, to help support business startup and growth amongst those groups. In 2021, IMBET delivered 25 minority business recovery grants to area minority-owned businesses. After finding that minority-owned businesses were disproportionately affected by the pandemic, each company received $2,000 in grant money to aid in the recovery and rebuilding of their business. In 2022, IMBET delivered 12 $625 grants through the IMBET Startup Scholarship, which is an ongoing program. Those were delivered to new minority businesses to cover the costs of registering with this state and any additional startup cost they may have. I'd like to note that IMBET grant opportunities are privately funded with philanthropic dollars. In honor of Black History Month, IMBET also hosted the first Black Business Pioneer Awards last year, and then we also repeated that event this year. Congrats to the most recent recipients: Cosetta Poole of Your Turn Special Events, Trina Badiaco of New Horizons Baking Company, and Manny Jeffries of Manny's 100% Hand Car Wash. This is to recognize those businesses that have paid the way for other black entrepreneurs who are making an impact in the community, and it's just an opportunity to recognize them during Black History Month. I'd also like to note that IMBET has been able to connect more than 200 minority businesses and supporters through networking events featuring key resources and technical speakers. Thanks for your time. I'm going to hand over to David White, Firelands Forward.
Thanks, Alyssa. An integral spoke in any economic development wheel is workforce development, so we're excited to share some of these successes and initiatives that we are working on today with the collaboration of many of our community partners. Retention has never been more important for regional employers, and so we've brought to the region the first-ever Employer Resource Network. Employer Resource Network is a program where we embed a success coach in participating businesses in order to address employment barriers and increase retention. We currently serve 1,600 regional employees, and because of the reduced retention... or I'm sorry, the reduced turnover and increased retention, businesses have realized that over 300% return on investment. We plan on doubling the capacity this year to offer Employer Resource Network services to area businesses. In addition, excited to announce that Firelands Forward and our community partners were funded for the first industry-sector partnership in tourism, hospitality, and Main Street business in the state. We look forward to that because it's going to help with industry partners collaborate to bring much-needed programming to build a pipeline of healthy workforce to our tourism, hospitality, and Main Street business partners. We've also partnered with the city and the county in order to bring a regional housing study in which hopefully we'll have the results tomorrow. An interesting data point from the housing study is, in our region, we have a .5 rental vacancy rate. In comparison, a healthy community averages at 4% to 5%. This data is going to help us attract developers because there will be an immediate return on investment for them. And finally, we have worked closely with North Point Educational Service Center to build what we call the Career Exploration Pipeline. And what that means is building a pipeline to retain talent in our area for our high school students in order to interact with them early, expose them to regional career opportunities, in order to connect them with the workforce directly, in order to keep that young talent in our area, which is integral to our growth. And finally, I'd like to thank the city and all of our community partners for your collaboration. I think that we are postured for continued growth and very excited for that.
Last but not least, a quick recap on our third pillar of work, regional development and brand awareness. We put this as an intent that we know economic development needs to be collaborative, and it does need to have a regional perspective because over 50% of our residents are leaving the county every day for work, and that number really only increases as you shrink that geographic boundary. So, we all must work together, and we all must collaborate to tell the good messages of what's going on in Erie County. Many, many partners in the city of Sandusky are helping us do that, so that's one key success that I'd mention. Thank you for your partnership in informing us what would be useful to the city for things like the housing study or an awareness event around the Economic Development Fund that happens with the city of Sandusky. That also happens at a county level, so I highlighted an upcoming Erie County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. A SEDS is a necessary tool to procure funding from the Federal Economic Development Administration. Our region has not had one in 20 years, so it's high time that we put it in place. I think maybe Mr. Pajali's predecessor took care of the last one, so we're excited to update that with many, many regional partners. That's just kicking off. And then a couple other things, successes from recent years. Excited to bring more efficiency to the economic development marketplace by bringing the Erie County Port Authority underneath the Ecadech management and continue to play a leadership role with the Sandusky Energy Special Improvement District, which we had a great success last year with the Washington Hotel. And then finally, just recognizing, I think, what everyone here is doing to increase economic opportunities for our residents is working. We're getting recognized both at a community level and then at an organizational level. We were pleased to receive two International Economic Development Council awards last year for our programs. That's all. Just one last comment from one of our board members, and then happy to answer questions.
I just wanted to share a couple perspectives from an elected official standpoint. I was selected by the Township Association to represent the nine townships on the board. We did meet last week, and we had a unanimous consensus with eight townships and 20 representatives or officials to continue our involvement with Ecadech. We think the group is doing a fantastic job of economic development and all the other things that you hear in our county. Just from a personal standpoint, Mylan Township has over $50 million worth of development going on right now, either recently finished, under construction, or in the works, that I don't believe would have happened without the involvement of Ecadech. So, this group reaches throughout the county. One of the things that I think is very positive is that the board is made up of elected officials, public groups representing the... you guys have representative on that board, which is very... that input is critical. You know, economic development is complicated, and to have private individuals on the board as well as public officials on the board early in those discussions is very helpful, I think. So, we thank you for your involvement and continued participation. And I'll just close by saying that everybody out in the townships recognize that a healthy and thriving city of Sandusky is good for all of us. And so, we just want to thank you for the work that's happened here in Sandusky recently and wish you the best for the future because it's important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick, and all of your entire staff. Comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
First of all, Abby, congratulations on your promotion or change, whichever it is you call it. But just take a moment to think back on how this started and what it was when you started this. This has grown into something that, from the presentation, everyone can see how vitally important Ecadech has become to the community, and it's nice of you to thank us, but for the $30,000 that we gave you, we did very, very well. So, we should be thanking you. Truly appreciate the work and the growth of Ecadech and what it's contributed to the county and the city over the years that you folks have been at this. So, thank you a lot. It's great.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I was trying to think back. How long have you been with the organization?
10 years.
10 years. And are you the longest director?
Got to be up there.
Yeah, I was thinking you're probably the longest director.
10 years in different roles, but it's got to be up there.
And you came in at a time when Ecadech was struggling, and you gave some stability to the organization. I think that was important because there are some detractors out there, but you came in and did a real nice job. I think economic development's probably one of the toughest nuts to crack. Maybe housing rehab is similar, and you got to navigate all those personalities, and especially if you're doing tax incentives and those kind of things, and I think you've done a great job. And we'll mess you up, but I'm sure you're on to bigger and better things. It's been great working with you. You always had a positive attitude and a smile. I don't know if your staff would agree with that, but I always found that to be true.
They won't today, won't they?
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
On this rare occasion, I agree with everything that Mr. Poole said, and your comments were particularly spot on. And Abby, Ms. Brink... I'm sorry. You have done a wonderful job. You've been a great role model for other people in the community. As Mr. Pajali said, you've done it with such grace and humor in a very positive way. Those will be tough shoes to fill, and I think you've just had an outstanding run. I'm glad I'm not on the board, and having to choose your successor, that's going to be tough. You know, some of the points that you made in... I'm not sure if you made them or various people made them in the presentations, and it highlights the importance of collaborative work, and you spoke to that. And you know, those new jobs at Arda... Arbaw are going to be... it's going to be a jump ball for... see who's going to get those jobs. There will be many residents in the city of Sandusky who get those jobs. And you know, sometimes we are criticized for supporting Ecadech because you provide support for... throughout Erie County. But the fact of the matter is that a job created in Erie County has about a one-third... about one-third chance that a resident of the city of Sandusky is going to grab that job. We see that in the studies that show where people live and where they work. It's very, very common. So, your success has been our success. We've been happy to be on the more positive swing lately at the city of Sandusky. For a lot of years, I feel like we acted as a sea anchor for Erie County, and it was tough. We're not in that place anymore. We still have further to go, and we'll keep going. But I just think that we need to keep in mind that this is a collaborative process of creating jobs, and that is the single most important thing we can do. We do it in our way by building a community in which people want to live, work, and play. You do it in your way, in your organization and your teammates, by making sure that there is receptivity to people who are looking for a place to grow a business or to start a business. You've done that very well. So, we stay in our separate lanes, but we work together. I just want to thank you again for your leadership for the last 10 years.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I would just like to say, you know, I can't... first off, I can't say much more than what my counterparts have said, but a memory just was triggered, and I remember speaking in regards to IMBET. I think we were just sitting in this room, what, pre-COVID, if I'm not mistaken, or sometime around there, and we had these large sheets of paper where we were just brainstorming about what IMBET might look like and how we might tackle this issue in assisting minority businesses. And I've been pretty vocal just about, you know, whether it's you, Abby, or Alyssa, or Sarah, who's now in Norwalk. You ladies have been so instrumental and just being such a great resource for business owners and/or aspiring business owners. And I just got to say, I mean, I certainly... I just appreciate you all, and thank you, Abby, and you know, we just... we wish you the best going forward. We'll miss you, but I know you won't be far away, so thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Wantington?
We had fun in the meetings, and I don't know who the new director's going to be in the Special Improvement District, you know, for the city of Sandusky. I don't want to be... I don't want to be... but whoever you appoint, thanks to Mr. Murray, what's five years now? We've met, you know, for five years, so that's a long time. I got a stack... I dug them up today. Stuff that I kept, you know... I dug them up today, stuff that I kept, you know, over the years. So, it's been fun, and I do appreciate your work. Have fun with down at the Nichols place. I know Al pretty good.
I think that I had the distinction in 2011, when I served a year as a commissioner, to offer the motion to support Ecadeck, I think, for the very first time. And the city's never missed a beat in the last 11 years. I don't expect we're going to miss a beat going forward. Mr. Murray said it quite nicely in the fact that a rising tide does lift everybody's boat. And as I look at what's going on around us, we all need to be realist and understand that those jobs are a jump ball. Those jobs are going to go to a lot of our residents, and we are appreciative of that. Not just what you develop here in the city, but what you develop in this entire county. You know, we pride ourselves on being the county seat. We pride ourselves on being progressive, but it doesn't work unless we all work as a team. And Ecadeck's been a great resource for us and a great team for us. So, thanks for what you're doing. And with this love affair going on, maybe now's the time for ask for money. I don't know. I got a feeling that's coming. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, and really, thank you myself. It's been lovely. I'm excited to stay involved in the community as a resident and now vested business stakeholder. And no, you're in really good hands here. It's been very fun. Thank you again.
Thanks. Thanks to you.
Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved. Second?
Put a motion in a second discussion. Not objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection. That motion's approved. Commissioners, we have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any consent items to the regular agenda? If not, Ms. Myers, will you present the consent items on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor license for Pipe Creek Wharf LLC. Item B, liquor license transfer for Mankey 1008 LLC. Item C, 2023 five-year capital improvement plan, second reading. Item D, opioid ordinance. Item E, payment for software solutions annual support fee. Item F, permission to apply for Firehouse Subs Grant. Item G, approval to submit permits for Cedar Point Causeway Wetlands. Item H, dedication of Superior Street Rideway.
Commissioners, having heard these new liquor permit applications, liquor permit transfer ordinances, and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Someone needs to find their cheat sheet and speak.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris, you found us first.
I make a motion to accept the items and declaring that all ordinances and our resolutions is drafted and presented to the city commissioner. Under consent agenda, items should take an effect with Section 14 or Section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second. And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, except abstain as to items A and G.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Now, on the ordinances, resolutions, liquor permit transfers, and liquor permit application.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, except abstain as to items A and G.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those liquor permit transfers, liquor permit application, ordinances, and resolutions are passed. We will turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, will you present item number one?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that a portion of certain real property owned by the city located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Warren Street and identified as parcel number 56-00983 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to David A. Mack and Christine E. Mack and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
I will be abstaining on this piece of legislation as this offer is from a member of my family. This item is a second reading and therefore does not require a motion, so we'll move right to discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on that ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Abstain. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number two, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed approving an amendment to the agreement with Ray and Associates Incorporated, New Philadelphia, Ohio, for the preparation of financial statements for the December 31, 2021, December 31, 2022, and December 31, 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanton?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for fueling services with Fleet Corps Technologies Operating Company LLC, DBA Fuelman of Atlanta, Georgia, to provide fuel credit card services to all city-owned vehicles and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number?
Requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed East Water Street resurfacing project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanton?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number five?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Great Lakes Construction Company of Hankley, Ohio, for the ultraviolet UV disinfection refurbishment project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, dramatic difference between bid number one and bid number two.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This project was estimated by the engineer at about 4.8 million, and the low bid came in at 2.6 and the high bid came in at 5.2. The reason for that big discrepancy in that large cost savings from the original engineer's estimate is because Great Lakes Construction, who had the high-rate treatment project that's already on site, there's going to be a lot of cost savings from them not having to mobilize and being able to utilize the same crews that they're using on the other projects. So, they came in really good for us. So, this is still going to be paid for with the loan. The good thing is, is that it's not going to be a $5 million loan. It's just going to be 2.6.
Great news. That should please our partners in the county also, I would think. Who knows? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number six?
I'm sorry, I missed Mr. Murray.
Yes. I have three daughters. She'll have to work a lot harder to be a family.
Thank you. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with West Erie Reality Solutions, LTD of Toledo, Ohio, for the Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I wanted to ask Mr. Klein, is this just appraisal work or are they going to do some right-of-way work also?
Through the president, this is neither. As part of the current contract, OR Colon is going to be doing appraisal work and right-of-way work and looking at all that. ODAT requires a third party to actually perform an independent review of the original appraisal. So, this is that third-party review. And we have 24 properties that we're looking at, or 16 temporary easements and eight permanent easements for this project. So, there's 24 total that they are going to be reviewing. And the good thing is, is when we do go to make those offers, they will be substantiated by that third party. So, when we are working with the property owners in that area for that project, we will have good numbers to make sure that we are negotiating it fairly.
Yeah, I guess my confusion might have come in when I was with the county. We had West Erie do some different right-of-way work for us and some appraisal work, and they did a real nice job. And I had forgot that you have to have another appraiser to look at the appraisal that they do, so.
State requirement, Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is an ODAT requirement.
Redundancy. Good. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number seven, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Chagrin Valley Engineering of Cleveland, Ohio, for the East Cleveland Road US Route 6 sidewalk, curb, and drainage project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of our city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Are we going to get a?
Commissioner Poole.
Never mind.
Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just a question for the engineer. This is about Cleveland Road.
The sidewalks, curbs, and gutters?
Yes. The sidewalks are going to be on the north side, on the south side?
Through the commission president, yes. The current project that we're doing with the roundabout, the stacking lane extensions on Remington and those things, we applied for safety funds on the north side. Now, we want to make sure that we're not having curb on one side and sidewalk on one side when most of the people down there, a lot of the people we see walking on the south, so.
Thank you. That's what I was -- thank you.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number eight, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending ordinance number 22-074, passed on April 11, 2022, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a new Kubota U Series Mini excavator from Strucker Tractor Sales, Inc. of Fremont, Ohio, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Water Distribution Division and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. I don't like it, but I don't think we have -- Mr. Klein shares with me that we do not have many options. This is typical of item eight and number nine. And item number nine, we are the victim of rising prices, and our option, Mr. Klein tells me, is to either eat the additional $5,000 on each of these tractors and/or cancel the order. So, I don't think they're very good options, but that's the world we live in today.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
It is worth pointing out that both of these are being purchased pursuant to a cooperative purchasing program. So, we're not going to be able to negotiate a better price with some other vendors. So, it's still a good price for what we're getting as of this date.
Ms. Myers, will you call a rule on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number nine?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending ordinance number 22-078, passed on April 25, 2022, declaring a 1979 Ford 3600 tractor is unnecessary and unfit for the city use pursuant to Section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a new Kubota 1 Series diesel tractor from Strucker Tractor Sales, Inc. of Fremont, Ohio, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Horticulture Division and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanton.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 10, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a five-year agreement with Axon Enterprise, Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona, for the purchase and installation of replacement audio and video recording systems for two interview rooms at the Justice Center for the Sandusky Police Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 11, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Brand Stetter Carroll, Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Recreation Community Center Site Selection and Conceptual Design Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
I know our, Mr. Milling certainly, I went through this. I know there was questions about the bids, and we ended up, we had 11 people respond, correct? We had 11 people responded. And we were questioned about 2007. And at that time, there was no updated plan. I tore through my garage and some boxes today and went through the Park and Recreation, all the strategic planning, actually come out of the Bicentennial Plan from 2016 to 2020. And that was the guide that we used, correct, to go. And now we're in the new five-year capital plan. And I'll see if I can get Mr. Milling to say a few words up here. Did a good job, and.
Thank you, Commissioner Wantington, for those kind words. Yes, I mean, we went through the process. As you indicated, we had 11 people respond to the RFQ. We went through a pretty thorough process with staff internally. And there were three that had a very similar score when we scored the proposals. We brought those three companies in for an interviewing process, and Brand Stetter Carroll was unanimously the company we would like to work with moving forward.
Mr. Milling, we had a resident question earlier, and I will paraphrase. I'm not sure I'll get it exactly right. But her concern was, I think, how the city's recreation center will dovetail into what the schools are doing with their, with their pool system. Is, are we giving that some consideration regarding, I know they've, for financial reasons, they have changed their model somewhat, well, maybe changed their model dramatically. How is that going to impact our recreation center?
Thank you, Mr. President, for the question. So we are working together hand-in-hand with the Sandusky School System as far as design and have been asked to be, partake in and helping with the design of the aquatic center over at the Sandusky High School. So to Mrs. Platt, to Ms. Platt's concern about a warm water, we will certainly bring that to the attention. You are not the only one, or only resident, I should say, that has brought that to our attention. We have several swimmers that have currently going over to the Norwalk facility to do lap swims, aqua aerobics, et cetera. So we will certainly share that information, but we want to work hand-in-hand with the Sandusky School System to be able to provide community use for that particular pool.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I would think as far as that earlier plan, that 2007 plan and any other literature along the way relative to a rec center, well, that's the first thing the consultant will do, is look at that research that incorporate anything that's relevant today into this new plan. So I don't think that'll go without use.
Thank you for that comment.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I think I'm the only one that's not convinced that we need a rec center. So would you just take a moment to talk about the data or what or why it supports the belief that a recreation center fills a significant need, just how we determine it's going to be successful?
I think, coming back to the city and being blessed to be able to work with this team, one of the first projects that I was involved with was the South Side Project. And while standing there and observing the proposal for the project and listening to some of our residents and what they're looking for, there was a direct need, and I heard that several times throughout the night, where they're looking for a recreational facility that they can be proud of to go to to do some walking, group exercise classes, et cetera. So I think, you know, being born and raised here and blessed that, when I was a kid, we had the YMCA. The YMCA is closed now. So I think it would be a great opportunity for us to serve our residents and give them a facility that we would be proud of, to give them the opportunity to not only recreate, but to have some social gatherings in this facility and to allow them to help and help them with their health and overall exercising and well-being.
Okay. I appreciate your enthusiasm and the general goals that you, that you discussed. I looked at the data that you said, that you folks sent me that, talking about this. And the data came from three, three comments from the specific South Side Ice Cream Social, analysis of results of what we heard, summary of all the other ice cream socials, and the 2007 Parks and Recreation Horticultural Services Plan that Commissioner Wantington spoke of. The South Side Ice Cream Social had 19 comments, 19 comments asking for a rec center. One comment was simply a safe place for children to go. Of the what-we-heard data from the whole rest of the city, 31% or 85 citizens expressed in general, we need parks and recreation theme, not a rec center. The South Side Plan process, which is completely separate process, there were 16 mentions desire using Mills School as a rec center. Additionally, 19 mentions of a rec center that you received from someplace online. I would suggest that that does not sound to me like a driven need by the major community. When I analyze the data, and this is my thoughts from what I took from that, it sounds like the South Side recognizes, and from the comments that they were making, that they need something for their kids to do. I would suggest that, since we have not, and we've been starting this since 2007, and after 18, 20 years of this, for staff to ask us to spend $152,000 or $100,000, if it's less, if the other 52 doesn't get spent, to pay someone, to hold three public meetings, to tell us what we need to do and where to put it in a town the size, I'm not sure it's a good expenditure is my problem with this. I see no reason why the planning, why we should not be able to decide where we think it ought to be, talk to the community and find out where, what, what they want. Because every different group of people I talk to wants something different. I talked to someone who has been an African-American leader in the community for some time this afternoon, and at the end of the conversation, and from looking at the data, it appears that Mills School has a place to provide programs for those kids, because that's what I took from the community meetings that you went to. These folks need something for their kids to do. It's all non-specific. And I would suggest from what came from the what-we-heard data and the rest of the ice cream socials, there's no indication that they want a rec center that's going to send enough kids to pay for that. So, to make a long story shorter, I suggest that we, that before we spend $152,000 and get pot-committed into being forced to put up a building that is likely to fail, just like the Y did, no one's mentioned, and I suppose you can speak to it, what we're going to do with the Boys and Girls Club, what we're going to do with all the kids that are now going to Cedar Point, out on Cleveland Road, to that facility. That's where people are walking now. Where do we get people to go to a rec center that we build in the center of town someplace and have the staff to make it, to make it work? I suggest, I suggest kids need, if you're just talking about kids, it's programs, and they should be programs that they're going to have access to. We just cut back on the one whole bus route. So I would suggest these, these, these children whose families do not have the money to put them into, into these private clubs and these traveling teams for, for playing hockey and all those, those folks are also not going to be able to get to wherever you put this centralized facility, which is also why the Y didn't survive. 2007, if you read what they said, they talked mostly about the top three things that they wanted dealt with outdoor activities, walking, as you alluded to. That's not a small point. That's what all the data was about. We now have indoor walking at Cedar Point's facility. A rec center's not going to meet that need. And it was also the 2007 study talked mostly about adult activities, not kids. And I would suggest we'd be better off, hold off on this, go back to the drawing board and say what will actually do well for all, for the differing, different areas of the community and what they, and what they need. Otherwise, I think we're subject to end up with a building and a lot of, lot of expense for something that we don't have enough people to fill. Swimming pool, I can play basketball, Mills School. There's all kinds of things that we can do to have programs. And it appears that the South Side is a place where these, would need children's program. And I would ask you, kids that live on Buchanan Street, if you move, if you move the facility someplace else in town, how are they going to get their journey day when their parents are at work? So enough said. And for that reason, that's why I'm suggesting that we not, we hold off on this. And other than that, I'll have to vote no.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
My colleague, Mr. Poole, asked many important questions. And this study is the way that we're going to get to the answers to those questions. And I, I can't emphasize how important it is to go through the public gathering, public presentation and information gathering process. Because, you know, a rec center, we've talked about this before, it means all things to all people. We could build 100 million, it would take $100 million to build a rec center that's going to satisfy everyone's wishes. And what we need to do is figure out, you know, essentially, here's a menu. This is what it costs to do this. It's just what the public wants. Here's what it costs to do this. It's just what the public wants. I don't personally care whether we build a rec center or not, not for me. It's, it's for the public. And we, one of the questions that's asked is, how do we know this is what the public wants? I've heard it every single year I've been in office now, that the public wants a rec center. I hear it in one meeting after another, and I've heard it every year for all these years. There's, I don't think there's any question the public wants a rec center. There isn't a question in my mind. And it is in part our job to figure out where to take, at this table, along with the support of everyone on staff, it is our job to figure out what it is that the public needs and wants. This is something that's integral to many, many communities. In those communities, it is enjoyed. We need to go through this process to figure out not only what do we want, but will it fit at these various locations? I mean, I think we've made it pretty clear, our first choice is for the American Cran property. But there's a giant pipe, natural gas pipe, if I remember correctly, that runs through the middle of that property. And it was for that reason we couldn't build the Justice Center there. Will we be able to configure this in such a way that it fits on that property? I hope that we do. It's a smaller building, I think, with parts and pieces that are outside. And so I think that that probably works. But we do need to take a look around. We need to make sure it's going to work there before we commit to that location. So I'm, I'm very much supportive of this. I will say, I do share the, some of the concerns that I think may have been mentioned by some of my colleagues, and that is the ability to fund this in, in darker times, in less financially successful times. We've seen, all of us have seen rec centers, rec centers shuttered around the country over, over many decades because they didn't have a dedicated funding source. When the dark came, when the dark times came, you had to make sure that you provided streets, police, fire, basic safety services. You're going to maintain those, you're going to cut a rec center if it doesn't have a dedicated operating source. So I do think that the levy that would replace the library levy is a logical place to look. I do believe the public will support that. I think there will be very substantial support for that. But we don't know what it's going to cost to build it. We don't know what the parts and pieces are going to be. We don't know what the costs are going to be to operate it until we go through this process. I'm delighted that we're here letting out this contract, because I think it's one of the most important things that we need to accomplish. Frankly, it's one of the last big things that we have left untouched, and we need to get to this.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pajali.
I agree with Mr. Murray's sentiments. I do think that this process will shake out some of the questions that Mr. Poole had. Can't say that I disagree with Mr. Poole on some of that stuff. I, I hope that one of the things that this study will look at is the reuse of Mills School, and perhaps, maybe that facility can go there. I don't know. And, and I have shared with my other colleagues around the table, I, I can't vote for a rec center if we don't have a dedicated funding source, because building it is easy, maintaining it's the difficult part. So without that, I don't think I could vote for it.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a role in the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
No.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 12, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a two-year lease agreement with Peerless Stove and Manufacturing Company for the building and land located at 334 Harrison Street, Sandusky, Ohio, for the period of January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2024, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for, I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number 13.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 13 Building Code, Title V, Additional Local Provisions, Chapter 1341 Environmental Health Housing Code of the codified ordinances in the manner and way specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance should take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Hiley, would you be the person to speak to the questions that Mr. Poole, Commissioner Poole submitted?
Mr. President, I think I can speak to at least two of the three questions.
Great.
The first one, for the gains or losses, I'm not quite sure what that question means, so I won't be able to speak to that. But as far as the Airbnb, what we're doing to make sure that everybody's compliant or as close to compliant as possible, the Planning Department, Zoning Department keeps an eye on those issues, forwards them to code compliance. And then we have a, a person down in, in the inspector and code that follows up and sends letters. We also monitor the Airbnb sites, the various sites, and pick up people that way if they're not registered. In addition, we go through the list that the Otter's Office gives us for people that submit their funds through that office and cross-reference it to see if they're on our list or not. So there's a multitude, multitude of different ways that we try to check to make sure that people are compliant. The second, or the last one was about the limited Airbnbs, I think. I know Huron has a number that they can't have more than 5,000 or whatever the number is, I'm not sure. We have different transient zones, so I think we're doing it somewhat that way. If the commission wanted us to research or have a number and bring that information to you, we'd have to do that. to you, we'd have to do that, but I think the way we have our zoning and maps for that is kind of limiting how many, how many and where those transit rentals are taking place, so it's kind of a different approach than other municipality. And I'm not quite sure on the first question of gains or losses of...
Commissioner Poole, do you have an idea?
I got an idea, what it, I just read what he said. We pass this legislation, do you anticipate any gain or loss in revenue? Just from whatever changes remain in revenue? If the answer is you don't suspect this, no?
Um, my, through your commission president, my suspicion would be a very slight gain in permitting fee revenue, because there would be additional transient rentals that would have an additional, that would have a permanent compliance, but it would be probably very minor. I would anticipate any uptick in transient rental application revenue is probably just based on the additional rentals coming online, more than this change in legislation.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Orzak, do I understand you correctly, that the enforcement mechanism falls to the code department? So the code department is the person, are the people that are, that are reviewing, say, an Airbnb website or Verbea website to verify that there's not a whole host of people out there transiently renting in the city without a permit? We have a person that actually does that?
Yes, sir.
Every once in a while?
Yes, sir. They do that regularly as part of their job assignments, and close participation with the Alec Oak and Aaron Blair from the zoning. And then also, once in a while, we'll get a complaint, complaining about it, so, but most of it's basically doing legwork and looking on, looking online, looking on the sites. We were catching quite a few early in the process a few years ago. Not so many these days. It seems like we're, you know, most of the folks are in compliance.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner John.
I want to thank Mr. Healy and whatever staff worked on this for responding to our request to do this. I think the, maybe any windfall would come from, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the bed and breakfast and the other category, other category weren't, they were all under transient housing before, and they weren't permitted, right? They weren't, you didn't have to get a permit for those, so you'd pick those up along the way?
That's correct, Commissioner. I think there are a few longstanding things called rooming houses and tourist houses, which are basically BnBs, that didn't have a specific permitting category previously, and now would be paying a transient rental permit as designed in this legislation.
Okay. And my other question is, or comment is, I think the only transient housing category that's functioning now is the overlay district, right? Or it's not because of that lawsuit, right now, it's, you have to bring additional legislation to have that function again?
That's correct. Again, through Commissioner President Brady, because of the pending lawsuit, that's prompted a couple of these pieces of legislation. Now, this specific one is what you all requested at a previous meeting, which is an add-on to the regulations that we brought back. There is another component that is set for public hearing and legislation on March 27th, which are the actual zoning rules, so the zoning categories, so whether or not you can transient rent in, previously before the lawsuit, for example, in downtown business, that's a zoning category, and that's coming back, and was approved by Planning Commission and is set for the March 27th City Commission meeting. And that would include the transient rental overlay districts.
Okay. And I guess where I'm going with that is, I know there's been certain members of the public who have wanted us to have a discussion on transient housing at this table, and I guess I certainly hope that we will entertain that discussion when that legislation comes in the very near future.
I presume.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
Like to ask the law director, the residential business areas, is that going to creep into the neighborhoods now? If you have, say, a business, a little grocery store is there, they close down, and now I can use that house on either side, east or west of this, is that something that we can track better? After, when I was reading this, I just thought, and then how do they go about applying? Who do they contact for that?
So, to use your first question, whether, if someone's using a commercial space currently in a residential district, if they stop using it, can they continue to, will that allow...
Can they convert that into, in the middle of a neighborhood? Say, if I had a little tiny drive-through, I close it down, now I'm going to make it into a transit rental?
To answer that, you could not do that. So if you had a commercial use in a residential district, what it would be, and it's a legal commercial use in a residential district, what you have is a legal non-conforming use, and as soon as that use, so if it is a drive-through convenience store or something, as soon as that use ceases, it has to comply with the underlying zoning of that district. And if the zoning of that district is residential, one of our numerous residential districts, and it doesn't allow for transient rental, you would not be able to convert that to a transient rental without a rezoning, or some other approval process that would have to go through Planning Commission and City Commission. And I believe there was a second question, and I think I lost it as I was answering your first one, so if you could remind...
About applying, how do you track?
Thank you.
How can we track this? I'm worried about this getting into the neighborhoods. I have for a year or two, that, you know, it spreads in, like, you know, we get one in, we allow one, somebody else...
Sure.
Across the street.
So currently, in order to have, you cannot, historically, you cannot transient rent in a residential district. So in order to do so, you would have to seek a rezoning, so the application would be for a rezoning. And that application, you apply to the Planning Division, and if it's appropriated and not denied by them, it goes to Planning Commission and then comes before you as a rezoning. The only other way historically that's happened is the transient rental overlay district, and there's only one in existence, which is generally speaking in the Cove District. And that has, at times, people have sought to expand that, but again, it's an application, it has to go before Planning Commission, and then it has to come to City Commission as a rezoning as well. So there isn't absent an application and going through the rezoning, or some areas you can do a conditional use permit process, but again, has to go to Planning Commission, get approved by them, and come before you. So there's always that public process. You cannot just plop one into a residential rezoned district, because that would be an illegal use. And currently, you can't do that at all, which is why we're trying to reinstate the zoning categories as they were from 2017 until about a month and a half ago. Sure.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commission, audience, and staff. A donation of $150 for the K-9 Fund from the Home Builders Association of Erie County if you get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second. Motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion be approved in hearing, no objection, or, that is approved. Our thanks to the home builders.
Thank you. The city was notified that we were chosen to participate in the Community Links Internship Program through the Erie County Community Foundation. This summer intern program will provide a $6,000 grant to the city to cover the 10-week gross payroll expense for a GIS intern for May, June timeframe of 2023 through August 2023. We appreciate the foundation's support on that project. I know Tiffany is very excited about it. Sandusky Fire has been awarded two Bureau of Worker Comp grants. The first award was for the Safety Intervention Grant in the amount of $40,000. This grant will be used to offset the purchase of an automatic cot and load system for a new ambulance that is expected to be delivered in February of 2024. The second grant award was for the Firefighter's Exposure to Environmental Elements Grant, the amount of $7,320. This grant will be used to purchase 50 pairs of firefighting gloves and 50 Nomex firefighting hoods, if I said that correctly.
Yes, that's correct.
The deadline, this is from Finance, the deadline to file 2022 municipal income tax returns is April 18th, 2023. All individuals and businesses can utilize the Regional Income Tax Agency's website at www.ritaohio.com, or RitaOhio.com. The Public Works, we have a request for qualifications has been released for design of MacArthur Park and associated infrastructure. Staff hopes to have qualifications in hand to expedite design immediately following approval of the South Side Master Plan. This will help ensure that the potential design team is involved as much as possible during the final planning phase. For community development, the annual meeting of the Sandusky Tax Incentive Review Council and Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council will be held on Thursday, March 16th, at 10:15 at the Erie County Office Building at 247 Columbus Avenue. The meeting will include an overview of existing enterprise zone and community reinvestment area tax abatements and local tax incentive financing funds. And the city is currently accepting CDBG public service applications for fiscal year 23 for eligible nonprofits. There is a $25,000 cap per agency. There is $49,000 available this year. Applications can be found online at www.cityofsandusky.com/cdbg, or by request. For the Planning Department, the South Side Draft Plan Showcase will be held tomorrow, March 14th, at 6:00 PM, in the Mills Rec Program at Mills School. This is an open public meeting, and all who are interested in the planning process and the future of the South Side are invited to attend. Presentation of the draft plan will begin at 6:15. For the Rec Department, the Rec will be hosting the Spring Youth Summit 2023 at Mills Rec on Thursday, March 30th. This will be a collaborative forum to showcase our youth-focused organization's programming in the community. For more information, contact Tondre Frisbee at tfrisbee@cityofsandusky.com. The 2023 Spring Break Camp will be held at Mills Rec on Tuesday through Thursday, April 4th through 6th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Sandusky Rec continues to offer our city youth grades, kindergarten through eighth, a safe, educational, and fun approach to spring break. A number of agencies will provide many fun activities. Registration is available at cityofsandusky.com/recreation. The Downtown Sandusky Easter Egg Hunt of Three Minutes will be Saturday, April 8th, at 10:00 AM sharp in Washington Park, with the arrival of the Easter Bunny on the fire truck at 9:45. The Merry Go Round Museum will also open early that day for free admission and $1 carousel rides from 10:00 AM to noon. The Easter Bunny will be available for photo opportunities as well. And the last item is the Spring Citywide Cleanup Drop-Off Event is scheduled for Saturday, April 22nd, from 8:00 to 11:00 at the Sandusky Street Boat Launch. You can find more information at cityofsandusky.com/c cleanup. That concludes my report for the evening. Take any questions if you have them.
Questions for the city man? Mr. Orzak, this isn't a question, it's more of a request, and that is, if I'm asked to deliver any remarks prior to the Easter Bunny showing up at that, I would ask that you coordinate the Easter Bunny showing up after my remarks. At the Christmas lighting ceremony, Santa Claus showed up during my remarks, and I lost the entire crowd. Which is appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions or comments? If not, we'll move to items of old business, any items of old business. Items of new business, any items of new business, Commissioners? I would like to ask for a motion for a public hearing to occur at our meeting of April the 24th for the Battery Park Planned Unit Development.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the role in that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that public hearing is set. Additional items of new business, Commissioners? If not, we will entertain questions from the public on any item that pertains to city business. You'll step to the microphone and share with us your name and address.
Platte, 1217 Columbus Avenue, and I just wanted to kind of address Mr. Poole, some of your questions about the rec center. Right now, you can't see it, but it's snowing really bad. I doubt there'll be many people walking in this, or, and the problem with the Cedar Point Center is that we're always tied to Cedar Point. So for instance, right now, you can only walk there Monday through Thursday until, I think, it's 10 to 7, because they have other events going on on their weekends. They have pickleball and things like that. That would be nice, that that could be done at other hours also, which we don't have that ability to do anywhere in Sandusky, other than outside at Osborne Park. The other thing is, we, you know, obviously, we do not have a walking path, which is not a good thing. We should have one. I just don't understand how a community like Norwalk can be so far ahead of us on this thing. That Ernst House Housing Center must have been there for 20 years. How come they were able to get their act together and get a very nice recreational building for their people? So, and they have the warm water pool. So you can pick any place in Sandusky, and actually, it's going to be when you do your bike path, it's going to be two miles from my house to get to the bike path. Do you think I'm going to walk two miles over to the bike path? No, I'll have to drive over there, so I hope there'll be lots of parking when you guys are deciding what it looks like. How far away is Mills School from me? Probably a mile and a half. But I remember growing up as a kid on Lawrence Street, and I walked to the YMCA that was downtown. I've got kids that live on Campbell Street behind me, that all hours of the day and night are walking and riding their bikes. So if they want to go to something bad enough, they might actually walk or take a bike. On the transient rental, someone issued a transient rental permit to a house two doors north, and I don't know the exact number, I'm sorry, it's on the historic home tour, and it is in very poor shape. They just knocked down the porch, but I looked to see what the thing on the outside said, and it said that you could have 30 people in there. Now supposedly, you can have 16 people to sleep, and if you read their Airbnb, I think it's been pulled down, it's near a beach. I don't know what beach it's near. The question is, there's not the parking for it, and Mr. Oliver's policemen are taking time out of their day to have to keep knocking on the door and try to find the residents, because they're parking on the wrong side of Campbell Street. So whoever agreed to do that as a transient rental, gave no fault to where those people might park. And isn't two different things in a transient rental, 30 people versus 16? 30 becomes a pretty big party. And where are those people sleeping? Well, they're coming at about 10 o'clock at night, and they're leaving about 3 o'clock in the morning, a lot of them, and there's pizza boxes and garbage all over the place. And so when we talk about the quality of life for the residents of Sandusky, transient rental is in the neighborhoods already. There's other people in my neighborhood that have transient, it's already here, and people are already using it. And some people are very good and are doing their job correctly as a landlord or whatever it is. Why wasn't it pulled? The only way I think you're going to be able to get these people that are not taking care of things is to pull it. Say, okay, you did not go by the qualifications. Write it down, it's pulled, sorry. You have to bring it back up to snuff. You do it to a landlord, right? They're a landlord. Pull that application. Say, I'm sorry, you're going to have to call your people that are renting it for the rest of the summer and tell them this is not available. And then maybe they will get serious about what they're doing, because the guy who supposedly owns the house two doors down lives in Columbus. He doesn't live an hour away to come and take care of things.
Ms. Platt, I will have, I'll ask our city manager to look into that, and we'll look at that address. We can figure out where that is. I think we know, I think I know close to where you live.
Sure.
If we pick a couple houses around there, we'll figure it out.
It's two houses.
And we'll get to the bottom of that for you. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
And just if you would, this is for the city manager, if you would, would you give an answer to the question and find out how Ernst Housing is financed? I don't know if it's public or private or what.
She has the exact answer for you, sir.
Okay, that, that's...
Ms. Reader.
Okay, go ahead and start with that one.
So through the commission president to Mr. Poole and Ms. Platt, so the Ernst Housing Foundation gave a very generous donation to form the Aquatic Center in Norwalk. That was a secondary donation they made, and I want to say it was like 1994 or 1995, to fund the Aquatic Center. Prior to that, they funded the Sports Center, the basketball volleyball court area, so that add-on was done later, completely funded from a very generous donation, and then on top of that, the city of Norwalk does have operating levy to help support the operation of that facility.
So built with the donation and managed with the levy?
Correct.
Also, Mr. Chairman, in answer to her comments regarding about how far it is to walk and so forth, I understand that. So to understand why I bring up things about these other locations that offer opportunities for people to do things. So for instance, right now, you can only walk there Monday through Thursday until, I think, it's 10 to 7, because they have other events going on on their weekends. They have pickleball and things like that. That would be nice, that that could be done at other hours also, which we don't have that ability to do anywhere in Sandusky, other than outside at Osborne Park. The other thing is, we, you know, obviously, we do not have a walking path, which is not a good thing. We should have one. I just don't understand how a community like Norwalk can be so far ahead of us on this thing. That Ernst House and Center must have been there for 20 years. How come they were able to get their act together and get a very nice recreational building for their people? So, and they have the warm water pool. So you can pick any place in Sandusky, and actually, it's going to be when you do your bike path, it's going to be two miles from my house to get to the bike path. Do you think I'm going to walk two miles over to the bike path? No, I'll have to drive over there, so I hope there'll be lots of parking when you guys are deciding what it looks like. How far away is Mills School from me? Probably a mile and a half. But I remember growing up as a kid on Lawrence Street, and I walked to the YMCA that was downtown. I've got kids that live on Campbell Street behind me that all hours of the day and night are walking and riding their bikes. So if they want to go to something bad enough, they might actually walk or take a bike. On the transient rental, someone issued a transient rental permit to a house two doors north, and I don't know the exact number, I'm sorry, it's on the historic home tour, and it is in very poor shape. They just knocked down the porch. But I looked to see what the thing on the outside said, and it said that you could have 30 people in there. Now supposedly, you can have 16 people to sleep, and if you read their Airbnb, I think it's been pulled down, it's near a beach. I don't know what beach it's near. The question is, there's not the parking for it, and Mr. Oliver's policemen are taking time out of their day to have to keep knocking on the door and try to find the residents because they're parking on the wrong side of Campbell Street. So whoever agreed to do that as a transient rental gave no fault to where those people might park. And isn't two different things in a transient rental? 30 people versus 16? 30 becomes a pretty big party. And where are those people sleeping? Well, they're coming at about 10 o'clock at night, and they're leaving about 3 o'clock in the morning, a lot of them, and there's pizza boxes and garbage all over the place. And so when we talk about the quality of life for the residents of Sandusky, transient